Good evening, everyone. We'll now call the September 26th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Again, welcome, everyone. Our first item on the agenda is the review and approval of the minutes from July 25th. Do any of the commissioners have any comments or questions about the minutes of July? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of July 25th as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a motion in a second to approve the July 25th minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes for July are approved. Now going into a period of public comment. This is a period where you can comment about anything that's going on in the town. Now understand, our first item under new business is a public hearing, a formal public hearing. So if you're planning to speak about the text amendment, you may wish to wait until that timeframe. But if anyone else wants to make public comment at this time, now is the time. If not, we'll move on. So we have no old business, so we'll move on to the first item of new business. And that's a proposed ordinance 22-10 zoning text amendment application, file number 2022-17. So should I sort of focus in now or after your presentation?
I go ahead and swear.
Yeah. So anybody that's intending to make comment during this hearing, I need to swear you in. That includes the applicant and anybody making a presentation, anybody making public comment. So at this time, please stand. For anyone wishing to make comment. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statements made by you in these proceedings will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, state I do.
I do.
Thank you.
So staff. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is file number 2022-17. The applicant Kirby DeLauder is requesting a zoning text amendment to town codes section 1708170, prohibited uses in all districts, and also 1724020, uses permitted in the industrial park district. The amendment, if passed, would allow the private or public shooting range use as a permitted use by right in the zoning IP zoning district. As always, there is our timeline. The board of commissioners are scheduled to have a public hearing and possible vote on October 3rd, 2022. Town code requirement, town code 1744030, approval of the board of commissioners and review by the planning commission is required. As always, for all subdivision and zoning text amendment applications, the planning commission is required to make a recommendation. That's also staff comments. All right, so if there is a desire to allow public or private shooting ranges, it is highly recommended that the town implement minimum use standards before approval of the text amendment. For example, setbacks, the firing of rounds shall not be conducted within 2,500 yards of an occupied structure and 2,500 yards from a residential use. Dependent upon the weapon and ammunition, bullet range can vary between approximately 1,500 yards to over 7,000 yards, according to the NRA, NRA website. Gun safety ammunition maximum range, which I included a copy in your packets. A bullet from a shot or a miss may fly several miles before it impacts the earth. Second bullet, consider limitation of hours of operation. Third bullet, minimum lot size, one acre to permit construction of berms and sound remediation tools. See attached Department of Energy Range Design Guidelines, which I gave you. Fourth bullet, minimum setback of operations for property line. Safety precautions such as professionally designed and commercially fabricated bullet traps and their backstops to prevent ammunition rebound. Earth berms constructed in the firing range, shooting would have to be restricted below the berm line to prevent overshots. Collection of any lead ammunition must be done daily. Public courtesy warnings like hazard signs and gated fencing to notify passerby of their proximity to the range. Noise reduction measures such as buffering requirements may be required at point of origin at DB level of a 20.22 caliber rifle with standard velocity creates 140 dB of sound. Sound carries dependent on several factors, including weather, wind barriers, liability insurance requirements for bodily injury and property damage. Prohibit location of ranges within a proximity of, you know, put in a, put in a miles of federal government and state and local government operations. Ensure all environmental and other laws and regulations are met. The town may wish to include minimum use regulations for both indoor and outdoor shooting ranges, even though we're talking about just shooting ranges right now, outdoor shooting ranges now. The town may wish to require a special exception for the establishment of an indoor or outdoor shooting range as opposed to as the of right in the industrial park district. Also attached are various materials from different sources regarding rifle ranges. Miss Nail, can you please put the zoning map on the projector, please? Also, we need to remember that we're talking about a text amendment to the, that can be applicable to any property in the industrial park zoning districts, which you can see in white and dots, polka dots on the east side of 15 and also on the west side of 15. Because you can also see it buffers the institutional, the general commercial, the conservation, recreation, low density, residential, and ORI zoning districts. So suggested motion, I have four suggested motions to you. Move to recommend approval of proposed ordinance 22-10 with comment. Please state the comments for the record or move to recommend approval of proposed ordinance 22-10 without comment. Or move to recommend denial of proposed ordinance 22-10 with comment. Please state the comments for the record. Or move to recommend denial of proposed ordinance 22-10 without comment. And that, that's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Zach. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
Mr. Hagan. Since we're talking general range, can we divide this between an indoor range and an outdoor range? Because I think the requirements are drastically different.
So the, the application that you're acting on tonight is just a straight up shooting range. If it's the commission's decision that it would recommend a different type of proposal, so just say, for example, if you're more inclined to recommend some type of approval for an indoor range, but not an outdoor range as requested, you can make that notation and send it up to the board of commissioners that way. Okay, so even though it wasn't requested, but just keep in mind that what was requested was indoor, outdoor, whatever.
Right, it's an open.
It's a, yeah, it's.
Just a range.
It's a very general application.
That's why I was concerned because the requirements as listed wouldn't be remotely be sufficient for an indoor range. And that would be my concern. Because none of what's there would take like concern of lead in the air and proper ventilation and things like that.
Right, so I mean, basically you're being asked to act on a very general request.
Right, and that's why I'd like to, wanted to know if we could split them off because I see different requirements for either, and I don't necessarily want to say, hey, this is just any gun range. I'd rather say, hey, for indoor ranges, we'd have to see it in the future maybe, or put these restrictions on it. Or for an outdoor range, this is presented, I'd like to see them split off because there's so many different requirements and.
No, they, well, they, they are vastly different and or vehicles, if you will. But keep in mind that the applicant is asking you to act on his application. So you would also have to have a motion and a vote that would support any type of splitting of the recommendation, if you're tracking me.
Right, but isn't the, the motion to change one of our standing laws?
Well, no, the, the motion is to make a recommend, the motion would be to make a recommendation to the board of commissioners with respect to what has been submitted to you. And so you could say, because while you're voting on this, what you're voting on is the nature of the recommendation, if any, that you're going to give to the board of commissioners. Because under state law, it's the planning commission's obligation to review all things zoning.
Right, and then my concern is, you know, since we're changing, you know, town code 17.0810170 is the end what we're going to adjust or change. I'd rather refine it and not give anybody a blanket open check.
Would, would this, would it satisfy you then in section 1724020, the uses permitted in the industrial park? The applicant has letter E listed as private or public shooting ranges. If, if the word outdoor were added to that, would that satisfy your concern?
Yes, I just want to. Because I see it just a huge difference between outdoor and indoor requirements. And we haven't listed any, if it's indoor requirements. And I don't want to give somebody the okay to build, you know, an indoor requirement, since we're changing, you can build it anywhere in these industrial districts. After we change the code, it could be somebody else that comes in and we've given them the okay to build an indoor.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's pros and cons, I assume, to each.
Right, I just don't want to, unless we had evidence presented, I don't want somebody building an indoor range, you know, without consideration.
Well, I mean, you, what you need to keep in mind is that should you make a recommendation of, of any ilk, all right, it will apply to all industrial zone property.
Right.
Right, which is why in the staff report, one of the suggestions of staff was possibly considering this being a special exception type of request so that you could consider the geographic location. You know, dependent upon where it is in the industrial zone.
Well, one way you could potentially get around that is obviously there's going to be some areas in the industrial zone that we're not going to want outdoor or indoor, indoor ranges. However, looking at the property in question, we could narrow down any potential for somebody to build on the other side of 15, a gun range, if we were to say, you know, an industrial property has to be so many acres in size.
Right, well, and that, those are some of the other possibilities that staff suggested. So if you were to say, I think, I believe staff set a minimum one acre as, as a consideration, and so and then if you have, and not adjacent to, you know, schools, blah, 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 you know, those things, then, then you are going to, by necessity, restrict where it could go because the property would have to meet those criteria.
I mean, we couldn't, that could be a big chunk. We could increase it from one acre to 10 or 15 if need be.
Well, sure, I mean, you, it's, it's in, it's in your discretion as to how you want to approach this. And, and, and it's in your discretion as to how you make a recommendation to the board, and of course, if, if everybody has his own idea or her own idea, then the board's not getting any recommendations. They're just going to have everybody's individual comment. You know, because again, it's the board of commissioners that will act on the proposed legislation.
Any other commissioner? Were you? Questions, comments?
No.
Of staff?
Yeah, I mean, my concern is I'd rather have them with the staff have to adopt the Army Corps of Engineers regulation for a range. That, that's stricter and more defined, and I like the Army Corps of Engineers when it comes to shooting questions.
Rather than the DOE?
Right.
Do you happen to have that in front of you so that we can reference?
No, it's 400 pages.
I know, I have a lot of paper here.
Yeah, I mean, I pulled it down. So you have the Army Corps of Engineers has recommendations, the Department of Air Force has a recommendation. Then the United States Army has separate recommendations, as does the NRA. The default tends to be the Army Corps of Engineers worldwide when somebody's setting up a gun range.
We, we chose the DOE recommendations because they were compact and seemed to cover the general topics. And they're, yeah, not giving you 400 pages.
Yeah, I just think it's more specific and talks of any instance, you know, of overfly, of shatter of everything.
Well, 400 pages would be more specific for sure.
Yeah, and I mean.
But at the same time, I think we have to use common sense and decide what is it that we're hoping to get out of this too.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if you look at the exhibits to the DOE, there are a lot of, there's some really helpful diagrams at the end that show you know, range criteria, if you will, they have open range figures, then the surface dangers for small arms, surface danger zone for firing ranges. I mean, there's, there's a lot of information packed in here, if you want to get that granular. Keeping in mind that I presume that none of you is a ballistics or firearms expert. Don't make assumptions, I know.
Yeah.
I presume, but I.
Yeah, I'm just, as I said, the DOE is not considered in the top 10 recommendations for gun range, you know, builds. And there's disputes, if I look in here of shots and grains and what they're going to do, I would disagree with them. And then the Department of, you know, the military would also disagree with what that grain range would do and how far it would travel.
So before we get too granular into our recommendation, is there any more specific comments, questions for staff?
I, I do.
I have questions, but it depends on how far we want to dive down the rabbit hole as far as staff comments. I think it would, it would be helpful to hear some background as far as what is, what precipitated the the memo. To have some background information as far as.
Precipitated which memo?
They the change in the, to make the exception for the ordinance, I think, to be able to hear the background information of what this is going to look like.
The recommended minimum.
The applicant at some point, so we haven't gotten there yet.
True, but it's hard to dive into all of these. Do we need to dive into all these staff comments right now, is my question?
Not necessarily. We're going to hear from the applicant, then we're going to hear public hearing comment, and then the applicant will have time for rebuttal, and we have time. Well, before that, we have questions of the applicant to understand where they're coming from.
Sure.
But, you know, we ask as many questions now as you want, but we'll, we'll have plenty of time for more diving, deep diving.
Deep diving. I, I think I'll hold off some of my questions until later and
Okay.
as more information is presented, because I don't want to go down the rabbit hole yet, until we get.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to cut off conversation, but we haven't heard from the applicant.
That's a good theory, let them come forward and then we can ask specific questions.
Yeah, I think that will give it context.
Okay. So would the applicant like to make a presentation? And state your case.
You could please turn on the button.
Yeah, sorry. Kirby Lauder, 109 Park Lane, Thurmont. I'm just here to answer questions. Really, the presentation, the property kind of speaks for itself. Anybody that's went out there to take a look at it, I know some of you have. It's, in my opinion, a perfect location. There's embankments on almost every side, except if you're looking downrange, the left side is, is open. The majority of, of, of shooting here will be handgun. And it's actually directly into an embankment, a 40-foot embankment on the, on the right in the front. And there's probably another 20-foot embankment to the rear. And there will be barriers on the left-hand side to make sure nothing would exit, the, no rounds would exit from a, from an accidental discharge, whatever. But it's 25 to 50-yard range. We do have setup for a rifle as well. But the majority of the use here is for people to come in and do training, under supervised, professional. And I have, I have a person here tonight that can testify to, to their credentials and the credentials of the people that will be issuing the training. Nobody will be on that range unsupervised, okay? Joe Smith is not going to walk on that range and start putting rounds downrange. That's not going to happen. The range will be locked. Access is denied to anyone that does not have a licensed instructor with them. So it's just mainly for HQ, I mean, we've had, I mean, look, look at the world around you right now. The world around you is not, not a good place, okay? People, since this governor has changed the law, the people are now coming back to get qualified for handgun. It's, it's by record numbers, and that's part of it. They've got to go four hours up into Pennsylvania or maybe down into Virginia to find a range. And they want a range that's more local, that people don't have to travel four hours and, and go that far. So that's the, that's the idea behind it. It's just, it's just for that, that's the main purpose of this, for people to come in and do this in a controlled environment. This was used for hunting ground for years, so there was rounds going down out there, you know, unsupervised forever. So we're, we're just trying to get a place where people cannot have to go out into a farm field somewhere where nobody's supervising it, rounds are going out. And this is going to be a supervised range at all times. So if there's any other questions you have on that, and again, some of you have been out there to see, we haven't set it up 100% yet because I didn't want to put any more, anything into it until I found out, you know, if we can actually do it, so. Jeff, any questions for me, or again, there's a person here tonight with the credentials of, of the training and what they'll provide also.
Can you explain what you had in mind for hours of the range?
I'll let them speak to more of that. I'm, I'm basically providing the property. They're going to be, they're, they're providing the liability insurer, they're providing insurance, they're providing everything, all the training and, and kind of guidance for the setup of how we're going to set the range up. So I mean, if, if you don't mind, I'll let them speak to that. Okay. Is there any other questions for me or? As long as we're going to get specifics with them, good. That's okay. I mean, it's what we're here for, yeah.
I just had a question now, just with my mind. Drawing a blank, I had a question.
Okay, well, if you think about it, just let me know, we'll, we'll answer any questions you have.
So are you offering certification for concealed carry? Is that the intent or?
It's just a qualification course, handgun qualification, so they could, they could then go get a concealed carry if they wanted to. It's just a qualification course that they have to have in order to possess firearm. So it's only the phase one qualification? Yeah, and again, I'll let them speak more to the, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not as versed on that as they are, so.
So did you get a copy of the written recommendations from staff as to what they might want to set us the criteria for?
I've seen it, yes.
Do you have any comments about that?
I mean, most of it's standard. I mean, from what I saw, again, I would, I would rather any question you have, go to them. Because again, they're, they're, they're going to be running this in a professional manner, so I'm, I'm just, again, I'm providing the land for them and, and the setup for whatever they need to, to make this an effective range. So they can probably answer his questions a lot better than I can, so.
Well, there's no more questions for Kirby. Maybe we'll hear from the other person then.
Okay, they can come up?
We, we may ask you to come back then.
Okay.
Did you state your name, please?
My name is Kathleen O'Connor. I am, been asked by Kirby to be the manager of the range, should the range be approved.
So you'll, you'll be supervising the range and managing it?
Yes. I am a Maryland and Virginia licensed ammunition manufacturer. I'm a firearms dealer, I'm a firearms manufacturer, range safety officer. I'm also the chairman of Montgomery County Firearms Safety Committee. We certify and inspect all the ranges in Montgomery County, including police, private, club ranges, things like that. So I feel confident with people also that I'm bringing in. As Kirby may have mentioned to some of you, we have a Navy SEAL that would be working with us. Most of the other instructors that would be coming to use the range and bring students up are from a law enforcement or military style background. It's all professionally managed, handled. You know, safety, of course, is utmost issue, and I do have, you know, you know, I do understand the neighbors, you know, any concerns they may have, you know. So we want to be good neighbors, should this be approved and work with the community and, you know, be welcome, not something that's, becomes an issue or a problem.
Have you read over the recommendations from staff for the design?
I, I just heard, no, this evening, no.
How, how does that seem to you?
I would have to look at that again. It was just read over briefly. I would like to look at that before I would comment on it. I, I don't think anything really stood out too much, but I would like to review that again before commenting.
Okay.
One of the things, just to let you know, as you know, now more Maryland residents are able to get their wear and carry permits. So finding a range for instructors is very, very difficult, and I think even Sheriff Jenkins can attest to that. Many of law enforcement officers are instructors, and there's really no place to go and train. Many of the indoor ranges in the county or in Montgomery County, they won't let instructors come in, which means people are being limited to their availability of, of the class. It's a 16-hour class. First day is classroom instruction, going over, you know, use of lethal force and laws and things like that. And then there's a 25-round qualification that each student must complete. So in addition to that, you know, if possible, obviously, we'd like to have, you know, private instruction as well. Like, as he said, it wouldn't be a public range. Everyone would be there with an instructor to ensure safety and there'd be safety procedures and protocols. So it wouldn't just be ideally for Maryland wear and carry, it would be for private instruction as well.
And this is something that local law enforcement could make use of if they need?
Absolutely, absolutely. So I think it would be a benefit, honestly.
So where would they, I'm just wondering, where do they have to go now if they wanted to?
Most law enforcement has a range. Some of the smaller departments do not really have their, have a range, and they could make this their home. It would bring, you know, people and a little bit of revenue to the town. I'm from Montgomery County, so I get people all the way from Northern Virginia, Montgomery County, you know, who may want to visit here. Have never been here, enjoy the scenery in your, your town. You know, it might, might bring a little bit of, you know, money your way for people coming into town for training. Typical training would be, could be four to eight hours. That could be, you know, revised. Obviously, we have daylight hours, you know, we have things, we have to worry about cold weather and things like that. But, um, you know, a regular, a normal class would be either like a four-hour class or an eight-hour class.
Okay, I'm seeing, you know, a lot of pistols, I'm assuming, nine-millimeter, four, 45, 38s. Is there any rounds you're gonna, like the new dragon ball round, you're gonna say, no, you can't bring that on my range?
Honestly, when we certify ranges in Montgomery County, we limit caliber according to where they are. If we think this is only a 22 caliber range, we'll approve it for 22. If there's neighbors, you know, that might have an issue, we limit the hours a little bit. You know, we really always try to be good neighbors. We're generally think of ourselves as good people.
So for the layout of this range, would you allow like 7.62 or?
I mean, maybe for the rifle range, it's going to be pissed, it's going to be primarily, I would say, nine-millimeter 45. It's not going to be any 50 AE or 50 BMG or anything like that. I mean, you, that would be, I think you need a little bit more room to do things like that.
Grain, it's.
We, we would limit the caliber, yeah, if, if that would be agreeable or make it more agreeable to you. I would say nine-millimeter and 45 would be your most, 22 and 380, which are smaller for handguns. It would, there would be some, if the rifle is approved. Um, it would, there would be some, if the rifle is approved, um, which we also limit in Montgomery County, whether they can do handgun rifle. You know, we, we do tell them, um, it would be like two, two caliber would probably be two, two, three or five, five, six.
So no SKSs?
Um, well. Probably not. That's not really a training firearm. You know what I mean? That's sort of a leisurely.
Right.
Um, go out to the range and blink a little bit firearm. I don't think anyone's really running around doing training with an SKS, so.
So we're gonna, we're talking about just pure training and not somebody going out.
Absolutely. No, everyone will be with a certified instructor and there will be strict safety protocols for the people on the range, of course, which also keeps everybody. In proximity to the range safe as well, which is why those procedures are put in place.
But you can still have somebody out there clinking away if that's their intent, but we're talking about your range will just be for training purposes only.
Right. No one should be on that range except Kirby, of course, or his family or whatever he wants to do with it is, is aside and I have nothing to do with that. But, um, for my purposes of managing the range, it would be under a certified instructor supervision. Who follow our safety protocols, which we have put into place and every instructor has to follow those protocols. And if they don't, they, they no longer have access to the range.
Do you have a copy of those protocols with you?
I don't, but I can give you some.
Is there any interest to establish a hunter education program through the course?
I'm sorry, what was?
Is there any, I'm sorry, is there any interest to establish a hunter education program at the range?
Um, if we had a place to do it, it's outside, you know, it's all strictly outside. I mean, if there was a pavilion allow, I don't know what's allowed on that property. I think it, there it is, has, does have limits to what structures can be built there, but.
My reason to bring it up is I didn't, you said, mention Montgomery County. I took the course June outside of the, uh, range, outside of Poolsville. It was a two day course, but they had a pavilion set up where you could do the, the classwork position, other day take the test. Then they also had a range set up basically where you qualified with, understood basically how to use the weapons, et cetera. So.
Yeah, it is, it is really helpful. I mean, especially, you know, to get your youth involved. It would be, we could do, um, definitely have like a youth program there. I mean, there's a lot of things we could do for the community. Um, we can have a women's program there. Um. You know, I, I know there's probably people who would even donate their time, you know, to people who couldn't afford training, you know, to, to come up and, and be safe, you know? Because the, the world, uh, Sheriff Jenkins, I think can testify to this is kind of getting more dangerous and, you know, people are more on their own. Um, they've been limited as to what they can do to, you know, support us and protect us. So. The more we can be self-sufficient, I think the better. And this would be a good opportunity for people to be, you know, increase their skills and not just be dangerous, you know? Know enough to be dangerous.
Well, with, you know, the Hunter education course, they had Montgomery County police officers with us.
Yeah.
Showing us speci- specifically how to use the weapon, how to fire the weapon, you know, discharge the weapon, et cetera. So I felt very comfortable going through the course. Down there, understanding, I was working with experts on the range and everything else.
Yes.
I just think, you know, hunter safety obviously is a very important aspect with the department natural resources.
Yes.
I just think that would be an aspect if you could tie that in somehow with the range, maybe you might get more people involved on them.
Yeah, you do need to be certified to teach that class, but I'm sure we can have certified instructors come up and teach that. Like I said, it'd be ideal if there was some way to even just have a temporary tent or just someplace to get out of the, you know, to have shelter or whatever, maybe cover from the heat or.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there is some classroom part to that. Most of it actually is.
Yeah. And you take the test at the end of the word.
Yeah, yes. Yeah. So, um, yeah, that can definitely, and I think that's a great idea. I hadn't thought about that. But yeah, any, and any other programs that you guys think, you know, for firearm safety, things like that, um, you know, we can work into that.
Okay, thanks.
So what would be your process for collecting the lead?
Collecting lead? Um, the backstop is going to be, um, it's not going into the earth. It would be going into tires, which would be filled with, um, stone dust, dirt, um, rebar or something like that. So. Um, I don't anticipate lead really being in the earth. And then I think you could just remove those tires periodically as they get shredded or, you know, damaged. Um, and you'll know because there will be, we have actually roundbells set up there now. You'll, when you start seeing the roundbells getting, uh, kind of damaged. We'll know that it's time to probably change the tires, but I don't anticipate, we're not just shooting into the, the ridge.
So the, there will be a process for collecting lead, so lead doesn't seep down into flat run?
Right. Well, ideally it's, it would be lodged into the tire area. Yes. So those could be changed out. Rubber is a very good backstop.
Cause some of the designs I've looked at, they require a roof over where the targets are. So rain doesn't come down and cause the lead to disperse.
Uh, I've never seen, I've never seen a backstop with a roof over it. I have not personally. Um, I do, I have seen baffles from the shooting position to mediate, um, the, the sound. Yeah. So I, I'm not aware of a.
Well, actually, Deputy Sheriff told me that today.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm not saying I've seen every range. I'm just saying I have not seen one personally, so, um.
Okay. Baltimore County Police Range has that.
Does it? Okay. So they're sort of shooting into like a.
Yeah. There are more to catch ricochet.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. Well, yeah, that's always going to be.
I was going to tie into that and this was, um, one of the bulleted items in our, in our, um, packet. And it, it, there was a recommendation from staff that the, um, applicant, or, you know, if we approve this, then if there was a shooting range. That the collection of any lead ammo would be done daily. Was there a?
Oh, that was one, yeah.
Was there a reason?
I don't think that can be done really.
With the, the, the daily requirement?
I don't think you can collect lead on a daily basis. I think the lead would be lodged into the tire, um, area. And as those tires get deteriorate, they would, it would just be removed.
Okay.
All, probably biannually or annually. It would, it, it would not be possible to do it daily.
The daily is the, the shells, the actual brass?
Oh, the brass. Yeah.
The brass fittings. Okay.
Yeah, that can be collected. Obviously, yeah, that's scrap metal that goes into a, in a, in a.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cause I, I'm reading that as just the lead ammo.
Okay.
Oh, you just mean the brass, yeah. The brass would be collected.
Yeah.
Yes, everybody, students have to clean up the brass.
Right. And then the wild lead, we were looking at that as well. So the reason with the, how we came up with these. I think Amy, you're kind of asking that question too, or alluding to that is we reached out to Maryland Municipal League and also the American Planning Association. And they sent me a list of ten, fifteen by email, uh, different ordinances. So we, uh, looked over all those ordinances and, and we picked out what we thought was the best, um, criteria.
Okay.
If, is there a way to clarify that bullet if we include it so that there is no miscommunication on what that means then? To, to, yeah.
Yeah.
But the shells.
You, you could certainly clarify it. I think the other question that's outstanding is what about wild shots that don't go into the tires? Cause that, that, those shots will go into the berm as Mr. Delauter described it.
Yes.
And that's, you know, and the lead is an issue. And I presume that when the tires are dumped, there's some dumping regulation that goes with that. I mean, or the town of Emmitsburg doesn't dump, so.
I would, I would consult personally when the tires are ready to be recycled or retired, no pun intended. Um. Uh, I'm friends with the people who run the Montgomery County Academy. They have lead remediation. They constantly have their red. So I would just find out who that company is that comes out to collect their lead and, and there's companies that do that. And the lead really needs to be, uh, recycled because.
And you're using concrete, stone dust inside the tires?
Um, dirt, stone dust, yeah. Something that would catch. And, and the rubber does a fantastic job, um, of stopping it as well. So I don't anticipate a great amount of leads. Uh, there should not be any in the ridge ideally. Um, an accidental discharge would be, um, a major event and that should never happen. That is a huge massive safety violation. So I don't expect to have lead going into your, into the ridge there.
We also touched on hours of operation earlier. Um, I, obviously, you know, you talked of, you'd be set up for training. Uh, obviously, I, I'm assuming the individual who'd be interested would reach out to Mr. Delauter first, who would, you know, be able to unlock the property. Or are you envisioning you would be there on a certain day of the week, days of the week at a certain hours? And I, I know we were.
It would not be a monitored range. Um, anybody who wants to use a range would go through my calendar system. First day would have to come to an orient, and all instructors have to come to an orientation, um, about the range safety procedures, which you have requested. Um, once there, they've gone through that certification process, then they can request to use the range. I will send them my calendar. Um, and they would get the code for the lock to unlock the gate. So I don't, it doesn't, no one needs to be there other than the instructor and their students. And, and they have been pre-screened by me, uh, prior to them using it.
Obviously your calendar may change, but what are you, what are you envisioning as the timeframe?
Um, well, you guys can set the time. We normally, um, in, in an area that has residential, you know, it's not in the middle of literally nowhere. Um, we would not probably start before ten o'clock. Um, and that does limit our, you know, during the winter hours, that does limit, but if that, you know, say nine, ten o'clock. Um, nobody wants to be out there at six o'clock in the morning. Um, you know, being a bad neighbor. We, we would be your neighbor and we want to be a good neighbor.
So would you recommend, I know, one of our things with the proximity of a federal government installation, the standard one point five? Miles within a government facility?
Uh, within?
One point five miles. You can't have, since we're talking ranges here.
Right.
The standard typically is you can't have a range within one point five miles of a federal's facility.
Okay. Is there one here?
Yeah, I wanted to touch on that. Actually, I had some, I had some questions. So if you look at the industrial. If we look at the industrial zone, because that's what we're focusing on tonight, not, not any particular site in, in general, but. If we allow this in the industrial zone, if you were to use the twenty-five hundred yard. If we, if, if we consider that twenty-five hundred yards is one point four, low over one point four miles. So if you do a radius around that, unless I'm looking at this wrong, to me that would exclude all of Emmitsburg. You wouldn't be able to put.
What's federal institution?
A range. No, I'm looking at the, the setback one. And then if you look at the, the proximity bullet, I mean, if you allow me. Yeah, we have. Obviously this building's county, they have a post office in town. So I mean. If we, if, if the one point five mile proximity is, is a requirement to me. Unless I'm looking at this wrong, um.
That's federal facilities. It wouldn't be this, this is, it, it's meant to be, you can't shoot at a federal facility with a sniper rifle.
Oh, okay. So it's, as long as you're shooting away from the federal facility.
Right. It doesn't matter.
Then. It, it doesn't matter. The proximity then would not matter?
Well, it's, so FEMA would matter. Um, post offices do not matter. Local institutions do not matter.
As long as you're firing away from the federal property.
Doesn't.
So.
When it, that rule is federal facilities only. So think of federal facilities.
There's no scale on here, but if, if, if you were to take the entire industrial zone and go, you know, in an easterly. Or sorry, westerly movement there, uh, to me, that is under one and a half miles.
What, it's, where do you draw the federal facility for that? But that's different.
Get too focused on the federal facilities. I mean, there's all kinds of residents that live in town. There's other facilities besides federal. So. I think, I'm just. Of everybody's.
Right, but we have a particular line that's named federal government facilities. And that's what I was trying to address. It's that particular line.
Well, I think one thing that we're, we need to consider too, is that it would be monitored by professionals, licensed professionals within. That's the only way it would happen. And I know I live right there in South Gate in the yellow and I hear gunshots. On either side of my property. I don't know where they're coming from. I don't complain about it. It's the nature of where we live. But I would much rather see it in a contained area under the, a licensed instructor. Than just someone popping off in the backyard. To me, that's, that's a safe, secure, professional place. To allow people to practice. And they're shooting away. I mean, we have ex-Navy SEALs and people who trained secret service who's going to be there. I don't know that you can get much safer than that.
Yeah. And, and the only reason I was bringing that up, that whole, you know, federal, the proximity is. It, it, and, and again, unless I'm looking into this wrong, it's almost like if we put that stipulation in there tonight. To me, then it would be.
Nowhere.
Yeah. And then what's the point of doing this entire exercise? Because you wouldn't, wouldn't be able to allow it in town anyway.
So I could just say why you added that?
Mister, Mister Chairman Mayo? Yes. So the reason why we added, we just put that twenty-five hundred. Because it came directly from the National Rifle Association. You know, we don't, we're not experts in this. We feel that the NRA is definitely experts. So we just put that there. I, I understand your viewpoints. That's just, we put that there just for your FYI.
Okay.
And I, one thing that's concerning is hearing people are firing guns in their backyards. Cause it's been prohibited within the town as long as I know.
I don't know where it's coming from. I know.
It's coming from the mountain side. Cause I hear that too. But I don't think it's within the town limits.
No, not within town limits. But if you look at where town limits are, you, you could be right outside town limits. On that border, fire in, and you're very close to residence. Whereas if you are in the industrial area pointing away. There's no residents in that direction. So I guess to my point, I'm saying that's safer. Than what I'm currently hearing behind the park.
Well, the only thing that you can legislate is obviously within your own town boundaries. And so if you're dealing with. You know, county owned property or hunters up in the mountains.
Correct.
Whatever. I mean, the only thing that that really speaks to is how far noise carries. It, as well, because if you're hearing it in your yard.
Yeah. And that, and that brings up a good point is how far does the noise travel?
Well, we don't know where they're coming from. Let's just state that. So we can't assume they're coming from the mountain. We can't. For all I know, it's somebody on the property on the other side of the park. I don't want to make, point any fingers or accusations, but we don't know. I don't know where they're coming from. So I don't want to assume it's from the mountain and therefore say it's too noisy. Because I, I don't know that.
No, and that, and that wasn't my point. I'm, I'm saying that, you know, you, it's prohibited within the town, period. If somebody's doing it within the town, they're breaking the, the rules. Okay? If it's coming from outside the town, uh huh, you know, you need to look at. The related issue as Mr. Long pointed out with respect to sound. Because there is a difference between random shots and a school. And that impact. And I'm sure that your applicant probably has some thoughts on that.
So how do you plan to muffle the sound?
I mean, you can't completely eliminate sound unless you, you suppressors or silencers, which there'd still be some small amount of sound. Um, I don't know, again, what is allowed as far as structures. I mean, you can build baffles or a shooting position. That has a cover that would sort of project the sound, you know, into the ridge away from the road. Um, but, but, but you know, you really, in life, you really can't protect yourself from sounds that you don't want to hear. I mean, in general. There's really no way to, to, you know, truck traffic or horns or sirens or trash trucks or, you know.
Yeah, but there's a difference between traffic and gunshots.
Um, I mean, you can, you can minim- minimize it as much as possible. You cannot, it travels. It's an open area. I mean, it's going to travel. Um, I'm not going to stand here and say, yeah, we can, you're not going to know we're there. It's just, you can't do it.
There's also fifteen right in between those two industrial areas too, which creates a lot of noise. I can hear it all the way in South Gate. Um, just, you know, but this being in a, I don't know the term. I, I don't want to say valley, but it goes down. It's like a bowl. I think that would be harder to hear than the trucks on fifteen.
Yeah, it would baffle in there would be my guess.
Yeah. I mean, you, it, it, yeah, you, you will hear it unless, like I said, unless you're going to use suppressors, which. Um, not everybody has access to. They're expensive. They take a year to get, you know, I mean, it's not something like you can have everyone.
Mister Chairman, yes, may I? Yes, we just have to remember that we're talking about the entire industrial zone. Right. Some, some areas are higher, some areas are lower. We just have to keep that in mind.
Right. As a generalization, yes.
Yeah. Right. Cause this is not a specific application that you're considering.
Right. Yeah. We need to keep track of that. I have a question then regarding sound. So if we were to pass this tonight without, um. Without a stipulation of a certain decibel level threshold. Once the range would be in operation, is there current existing code anywhere? Uh, regarding noise that could be cited against, should someone complain that, hey? There's a loud noise coming from this particular property within town limits.
The only noise.
The only noise, it's not a noise ordinance, but noise, uh, it's a construction timeframe. So in our subdivision ordinance, it states there's certain timeframes that they can have to do construction. There's certain, there's, it's different from Monday through Friday. Saturday says a little bit different and Sunday says a little bit.
What about section nine that talks, it's, it's, it's very vague, but it talks of disturbing the peace. I mean, who? I always have problems with that one because it's, um, who determines who's disturbing the peace? You know, if, if somebody complains that his is loud, um, is that citable?
Well, that, so that's really more of the nature of a public nuisance.
Okay.
Which would be prosecuted in court.
Okay.
And I mean, but there, to answer your question, certainly many jurisdictions have sound ordinances. They have noise ordinances. This just doesn't happen to be one of them. And in those noise ordinances, there are decibel restrictions. Um, because the decimal scale is logarithmic. I mean, it's, it increases dramatically as you go up the scale. It's not just like one to one, you know, it's ten, it's factors of ten. And so what, what you could consider is including in this particular ordinance or recommending, um, a sound, a sound restriction, if you will, be considered or a sound ordinance or a subsection. But I think it would probably behoove the town to have a sound ordinance period that is actually measurable than your general public nuisance uh, standard. Because that, as you said, I mean, it's in the eye of the beholder and some things will set some people off and other people could care less.
I guess my only concern with that is because we don't have that in place though, if we were to pass this without a certain level at it. And then like later on, we don't know, the board could pass that, then the, the shooting range. And, am I thinking this right? Because it happened before that ordinance was adopted. It couldn't apply to it. It'd be grandfathered in.
Yeah, well, it, it depends. I mean, that's a fine question and I can't answer that just off the top of my head. Certain things do get grandfathered in, but I'm not sure that an ordinance of general application is the sort of thing that would result in grandfathering in this context. I don't know the answer. Um, I think that it would be better to have a noise ordinance, but that's just, you know, my recommendation. Um, because it, you know, it does apply and as Ms. Bowman-Pallett indicated, you know, Route fifteen makes, makes a lot of noise. But that's, you know, that's your undifferentiated truck traffic and that's not a highway that Emmitsburg has any jurisdiction over. That's a state issue. So that's completely out of your hands.
Sac, did you have a?
Yes, and as we're, we're talking about noise, I'm sure the planning commission remembers one of the conditions put on federal stone, which was a requirement per the code, is any kind of manufacturing uses, any kind of uses in the industrial park zone must cease at, the noise must cease at the property line. And, uh, Mr. Wiley actually certified that for federal stone. That's a requirement for all uses in that district. So it, it's goes kind of productive for this.
Actually, that's pretty helpful. Yeah, I mean, if it's, it has to stop at the border in terms of your measuring.
It exists. That, that exists.
The way that's written though, talks of manufacturing, research and development and scientific, um, operations, which I don't think a shooting range would apply since it's very specific as to what industries it applies to.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's because shooting ranges weren't allowed.
Okay. Now that they are and it's not written that way, then could.
Yeah, well, that's right. So you'd have to, I, I think that you would have to recommend a further amendment.
Because I don't think it's really possible to stop gunfire to, to stop at the property line.
Yeah, well, you know, indoor ranges.
Okay, well, that I can understand, but yeah.
You know, and I don't, you know, as I said, as your applicant's representative indicated, you know, a lot of factors go into how much noise is generated. It depends on the type of weapon. It's going to depend on the length of the barrel. It's going to depend on what they're shooting. It depends on the weather. I mean, the list goes on.
So I apologize. What was your name again?
Kathleen O'Connor.
Kathleen O'Connor.
Yes.
Are there any more questions for Kathleen?
Yeah, I have just one. Not taking this particular range. If we look at this map, an industrial, considering that we're saying twenty-five hundred yards, do you think that would be adequate on the other side of fifteen there? Since we're looking at any of the dotted line on the map, just not where you're proposing a range.
Are you saying, is there another spot in that area that would be?
Would you recommend that twenty-five hundred yard, you know, distance away from housing or?
Um, we do a hundred and fifty yard from occupied dwellings and fifty yards from any roadway in, in the county. So that's a, a huge leap um, from my standards where our laws there. So I, I don't know this area well enough to, to know what, what that would leave you. Yeah.
Try to get what the, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, we do one fifty and fifty from a roadway, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Kirby, you were standing up. You want to come back up? So this is slightly off topic, but not entirely. I think it has some bearing. A, a number of us, you know, usually go to sites uh, where, you know, applicants are applying for something, you know, wherever it may be. Um, and we all toured federal stone when they first came to us and, uh, you know, some of us have visited your site. Uh, even though we're dealing with a specific text amendment this evening, I mean, you do have a site in mind, obviously. So it looks like you've already started constructing this.
No, what we started to do is lay out just so they could get an idea of what, they were giving me some things, hey, if you did this or did this, what, what would it look like? I'm just trying to get something in your, in your mind to be able to see what was happening out there, you know, and, and what would, what would it look like? And what, they came back up and started looking at, so yeah, we could, if we could do this or do this. We're just trying to, trying to throw some things together to see what it would look like if we, if we get approval. That's why I said we didn't do much more. Because I didn't, I didn't want to spend a lot more money on till I figure out if we can get it done.
Money in this.
What's that?
You, you've already sunk a fair amount of money.
Not really. Depends on what you call a lot of money. I mean.
Well, to me.
Well, you know, not really. I mean, in, 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 in a construction business, I mean, I did put an access road down there to Moe. I mean, I'll be honest with you. Where the sewer line came up from the rudders, they did a miserable job re- reconstructing that, that hill over there. And you can barely get a tractor down there. That's, that was the old access. And that, I didn't complain about it. I just, I don't even, you know, I'm still have a contract on the property, but they really should have done a better job with that. So we just went ahead and put a road down so I could get a mower down there. And then when they came in, I said, you know what? Let me open this up a little bit and start to see what we can do here. That's what we did.
So do, do you own the property?
I have a contract on the property.
And you have no permits for any grading?
Uh, no. There's a, there's a grading, there's a mass grading permit at the county. Been there for probably five weeks now. Probably would have been approved by now if some certain things didn't happen out there, but yeah.
One thing I would like to bring to the commission's attention, and this is no reflection on Mr. Delauter, but the actual owner of the property um, got cited for violating, um, violating the law.
Actually, I got cited. He got cited, I paid for it.
Uh, well, he was the one who was cited. Who paid for it is something.
Well, that's the important, that's the important part, you know, I mean, anybody can get cited, but when you start putting money out of your wallet, that's the important part.
Well, if, if I could finish.
Yes.
Yeah, the citation was issued to the property owner.
Right. So.
And so.
Did the property owner give you permission to?
We have a licensing agreement over there. What's this got to do with the range anyway? But, um, if you need to know, we have a license, we, we have a licensing agreement with the owner to do certain, certain things within certain parameters, yeah.
But you've been in excavation business for decades, correct?
That's true.
So, so you understand that you have permits before doing excavation?
Absolutely. You know what? We don't live in a perfect world.
So you were figuring that if you went ahead and excavated for this range, that the town would just automatically approve it?
No, not, uh, not at all. I excavated a road for access. Because my access, if the town had done their job, my access on the other side would, would still be accessible. It's not. I didn't complain about it. I built my road. Okay, and you're allowed to move a certain amount of yardage without any permit. And I was, I was on the edge of that, but yeah. I mean, I have no idea what that has to do with the shooting range, but I'll answer your questions.
If, since you asked that question, if a person has disregard for town regulations and county regulations, it makes me wonder if they have any regard for other regulations, like safety regulations and sound regulations and that sort of thing.
Well, I told you, we don't live in a perfect world. My business doesn't stop because of a permit. Okay, it just doesn't. My, my business doesn't stop because of that. And everything I did there, Mark, was within county guidelines, everything.
Then why did the county find you?
Because the county kept calling them. The town called them probably five times. The county did not put a stop, stop work order until they were called multiple times by the town.
Okay.
For something, for something that absolutely was harming nothing. It was done to every county standard. The county inspector even came up and said it looked beautiful. Everything we did looked beautiful. I just have a permit. I have a permit, I have a plan sitting on the county desk that's been there for five weeks.
Okay.
Okay, we don't live in a perfect world. When you find that, you tell me how it is because we're, I, I haven't, I haven't been there yet. So there's times that, you know what, you, you just can't do everything by every regulation. You can't. You'd be bankrupt. You just can't do it.
So when I moved to Emmitsburg, I wanted to put up a little storage shed that was eight by ten feet. And I wasn't sure if I needed a permit or not, but I went to the town office and yes, they said I needed a permit. So I got a permit, paid my twenty-five dollars for my storage shed. Um, and also paid a permit for my fence. So all the other town residents, when they go to do things, typically will get their permits. And yeah, it's not a perfect world and we may grumble about it. And I said, well, why do I have to do this? You know, I paid my twenty-five dollars and went on. So you think you don't have to do this?
That's not, that's not at all. You're, you're actually trying to paint a picture here that I don't appreciate.
I, I'm not.
You are painting, you're trying to paint a picture that I don't appreciate. I'm not that person, Mark. I'm not that person. There's times that, you know, we all have to go outside, you know, look, if you're going down the road fifty-seven miles an hour, are you breaking the law with the fifty-five mile an hour zone? Are you going to get cited for it? Hell no. No, you're not.
Well, I have.
You, you're for fifty-seven and fifty-five? Well, that's my point.
But, but this, this wasn't a, a little too heavy of the gas pedal. This was something that.
That's a subjective statement.
That you, you knew wasn't correct.
I didn't have a choice on some of the things I did out there, Mark. I just didn't. My business doesn't stop. And I did it per every county standard. I wasn't dumping oil in the stream. I put dirt out there and put steel fence around it and seeded in, just like I would do if I had a permit. Exactly how I would do if I had a permit. You know, and if the town were a little more business friendly, there'd be, it'd be a lot better place to work.
So the concern is it was just the timing.
It's a timing issue, absolutely. I have a property in Frederick that I sold. The Reth Myers and I have been working on this since March to try to get the timing of this to work out. And they hit some hurdles, we hit some hurdles. My property sold. I had to be off that property by a certain date and I had to move material. And that's just the way it is. You know, I didn't want to do it, I just had to do it. I mean, I'm either going to get sued by this guy or have a fine from the county. I took the lesser of two evils, one or the other. So. And we'd worked together really well to try to make this timing work and it just didn't work out. So, but I'm here to talk about a gun range. We can, we can go on all night about my, uh, my personal beliefs about permitting and all that, but.
And even if, even if we pass this this evening, this is just as a zoning text amendment to the industrial zone. It's not even a given at this point that any gun ranges would be, would be built. I mean, every instance of a gun range then would come back to the planning commission, right? And then it would go to the board of commissioners, just like, just like federal stones property, just like, um, Christ Community Church. I'm just throwing examples out there, recent, recent examples.
Yeah, so any property in the industrial park zoning district is required to do a site plan. Um, as Mr. Delauter, I'm assuming knows, lighting plan, site plan and landscaping plan. All uses, doesn't matter what it is, has to do that.
Yes.
Right, so this is just a general, I, I think we're getting stuck on his and what he was planning to do and what we're talking is a general request.
That, and that's what I said, all the properties in the industrial park zone.
We're trying to fill a void here in a, in a market, that's all. With a property that's probably one of the better properties to do this, uh, do this purp- make this purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Did we have any other public comment on this?
We're just about to get to it. Checking, make sure I'm not.
Planning ahead there.
So, uh, would anyone in the audience, well, actually I have a sheet here. There are several people that want to make comments. Uh, first one is Tim Bieber. Bieber? And even though I said your name, please state your name.
Tim Bieber.
Thank you.
With Rutter's M and G Realty. Obviously, for us, we've made a significant, um, improvement in expense in the property, adjacently, immediately adjacent to where we understand the proposed range would be. However, I know we're talking generality at this point because we're only talking about a text amendment. Obviously, from, from our perspective, um, we have concerns with safety. We have concerns with the, the sound and the public perception and customer experience. As we read the proposed text amendment, there are no conditions on anything. It's just allowing a shooting range or allowing shooting ranges within the district. Obviously, for us, we look at that, um, based on if it was within our proximity, there would be a negative impact on our property.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next is Rick Lindsey. Well, I can swear you in. If I find my sheet again. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statements made by you in these proceedings will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, state I do.
I do.
Okay.
I'm Richard Lindsey. I live at, uh, one, six, seven, three, seven Creamy Road. I'm the little triangular piece. I'm next to the sewer plant, wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
Been there thirty-five years. And I know we're in generalities. I, I'm just trying to get an idea on if, if this range would be allowed, the amount of customers, students would be roughly using the range on a daily basis. In other words, how many? How many shots can we anticipate being fired at one time? Um, that was just a question I had and one of the things I get concerned about when we talk and, and you'll have to excuse me because I'm not, I don't totally understand the zoning process as far as the amend amendments and whatnot, but we talk about the positiveness of a range like this and possibly using it as a hunter safety course down the road. Well, then, then when I heard one person say the primary use would be forty-five caliber or nine millimeter. If we'd be going to a hunter safety course, it would be rifles and shotguns. And again, I think more noise. And that's, would be one of the concerns that I had. And lastly, I think this Amy mentioned about shooting, um, not knowing where the shots are coming from. Um, and they said, someone mentioned it wouldn't be on town property because we're not allowing. And they said, someone mentioned it wouldn't be on town property because we're not allowing, I don't think we allow shooting on town, on, within the town limits. We already allow shooting in the town limits. We have hunting going on at the wastewater treatment plant right next to me. So we do allow that and I am impacted by that. What, the reason that I got relatively upset about this from begin with, years ago, a group of citizens from the town that time, whatever was the mayor, came out to the waste treatment, water treatment plant on a Sunday to do, I think you call it skeet shooting. We have, at that time, we had, I think, six horses. And when the shotgun started blasting right next to me, I mean, totally unannounced, our horses went nuts. We had to go through the fence. So when I heard shooting range, it set off a real red flag. So I just wanted to comment about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Michael? Not yet. After I get done my list, I'll get to you. Is that okay? Robert Turnquist?
We're here about Valerie Turnquist, item number six on the agenda.
Excuse me?
This, that's to discuss possibly recommending a text amendment to the board of commissioners regarding the side lot fencing.
Okay, it's a text.
It's a different issue.
My head just went to this. Okay, we'll come back to you then. Diane Walbrecker?
Hello, Diane Walbrecker, 535 West Main Street. I'm just a little concerned about the text amendment and the generalities that it would be applicable to the entire industrial park zone. So that's, that's my concern. There may be a different way to handle this that's more concise. But a text amendment kinda leaves us open. So even with the considerations that, uh, that the town planner mentioned, I'm still concerned about opening it up. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Diane. So there's no one else on my list. So did you want to make a comment, Michael? Yes. You solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statements made by you in these proceedings will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, state I do.
Just since you are.
Could you state your name, please?
Mike Hillman. I've actually run the Emmitsburg News Journal, but I also work for the Department of Energy. Just so you're, you're thinking about using Department of Energy's rules. Be aware, if you've ever seen any of the Department of Energy's ranges, they're on national security sites. I mean, they are, with the exception of Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory. You're, we're talking 20 miles away from the nearest house. And I know when I'm out at Los Alamos, the range is about six miles away and you can hear this, the guns going off. So just, and recognize, so we, and I was, I was familiar with the design of that, it's called a safety standard for the gun range. Noise was not an issue when we were developing that standard. There was more personnel safety, not noise, because we never had to work on noise. Second thing I want to talk about, Mr. Lindsey, both, as you know, somebody you know, Mr. Lindsey and I both have horses. And if you've never seen a horse react to a gunshot, you need to go see it. My horses, I have neighbors who shoot and they're, they're fairly far away, but when they shoot, if I'm riding a horse, I could fall off. If, and my horses go to the edge of the field as far away they can and they are panicked. And I know Mr. Lindsey has got some really nice dressage horses. You can forget him being able to ride his horses or his wife being able to ride her horses while shooting is going on. Forget it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this issue that hasn't signed up? Okay, if not, then the public comment is closed. Would the applicant like to make any rebuttals about anything or add any other comments? Okay. Did you want to make any other comments at this point before we get into discussion? So it's time for us to discuss and decide what we're going to do. First, okay, if I guess I must. Commissioner Hagan?
I think we're getting stuck on what Mr. Law, Mr. Delauter intends to do as opposed to what this in generality is. And I don't think we need to discuss what he's doing. We need to discuss in totality. You know, if we vote, we're allowing ranges on both sides of 15. And we need to be aware of that. We're not talking about Mr. Delauter's range down by the bridge. It's generality. And that's why I said it comes in the discussion of an open range versus an enclosed range when we start these discussions. Because there's a huge difference between, you know, an enclosed range on one side of 15 versus somebody shooting in an earth down in tires. And I think they're drastically different. And what you'd allow on one side, you may not allow on another side. And that's a separate case from saying we're gonna ban all gun ranges or we're gonna allow all gun ranges. And I think, cause there's this drastic difference into of how they handle the fire down range, where they handle the lead. They're just so drastically different that I don't want to get stuck on saying, oh, we're okay with open gun ranges because I don't know how many had, would have the like an open gun range on 15, you know, sitting there next to Emmett Gardens. And I think we need to be aware and we can, we can make that difference and say we're gonna make that amendment for just open gun ranges or just closed gun ranges.
So you want the amendment to be more concise?
Correct.
Specific. But you're still open to some type of amendment? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Any other commissioner?
The other idea is that because we are talking about the entire industrial area is to put a size minimum, a minimum acreage attached to, to anything. So obviously we wouldn't want the tire place on Creamery Road to put in a shooting range right behind where they are, right? Because there's limited space, but if you were to tie acreage to it, that could be different. And as far as the sound goes, I would be interested to hear, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask Ms. O'Connor about that or not. I don't know if we're allowed to ask questions of her again as far as what does the sound, what would it sound entail? Because that is a factor.
So I don't know if she has expertise in how far sound travels or not.
There are sound remedies.
Yes, so along that lines, what, one of the things that I was going to bring up, get more data about how sound travels for one thing and do some studies on the decibels that, you know, the certain distance from a gunshot, you know, what is the decimal reading? And, and you know, we might be able to get that information from other gun ranges perhaps, um, you know, if we do some decibel testing.
So would you propose then delaying this until that data is available?
Well, I have all kinds of proposals.
And that's, and I understand the idea, okay, and I understand the idea of an acreage. And for an open range, I'd agree. But if I put a warehouse then over there and totally enclose it and do it with modern shooting standards, I'm not gonna hear anything. And that's why if you say, I need a thousand yards, you could say that's for an open gun range. Can't say that for the thin of building.
So if one of the recommendations is to delay the amendment to have the applicant give more information, the Board of Commissioners has the authority to act on this with or without your recommendation at their meeting on October 3rd. So just keep that in the back of your mind. The code states the planning commission has 30 days to make a recommendation one way or the other. And then the commissioners, if they so choose, they can take your recommendation and tell the applicant, you know, give us another, do another shot at this, but they don't have to take the recommendation.
Even if we table it tonight?
Exactly. Now, the Board of Commissioners can table it. However, they're not required to.
Okay, and to get this off, off the, I use the word table. Historically, as the board liaison, I know my predecessors, we would, if something went to the board, we would abstain at the planning committee meeting and then vote on it as a commissioner in a town meeting. Since we have quorum, I don't mind doing that tonight, but I was gonna question that though. That whole concept of whether or not it's quote unquote double dipping if we're just making a recommendation that's non-binding in any way as, as a planning commission.
So, so this is a fascinating question because it is certainly the practice that if an issue comes before you in your capacity as a board of commissioner member, the, the practice frankly across most municipalities is for that commission member to abstain because he or she will ultimately vote on it. However, there's nothing that says you have to. And as you indicated, in this case, you're making a recommendation. You know, does that necessarily reflect how you're gonna vote? I have no idea. But it's, it's been a practice. It's not a mandate.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask Ms. Powell an additional question.
Sure.
Along that same line, numbers would have that somebody here is going to be on the Board of Commissioners in October. So I'm assuming that doesn't come into play when we vote tonight because we're not, we're just citizens as of right now.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. So it, it seems like we have a lot to consider here and there's a lot of things we don't know. There's a, a whole lot of concerns, well, there's some concerns by neighbors and other folks. But I think we have a lot of questions. If this is going to be a text amendment that applies to all industrial park areas and not just specifically one application, you know, I, I think there's a lot to consider. So I'm inclined to either table and or deny, table or deny this until the staff comes up with more recommendations and more precise design design protocols based somewhat on what your recommendations have already been and, and parse this out a bit further. To just allow this text amendment at this point in time, I think would open up a, a whole lot of cans of worms. And we, we could in theory have or allow shooting ranges, you know, in, in parts of town that are very close to residential areas and other, or businesses or, or FEMA or whatever the case may be.
Yeah.
You know, and then.
So that's where I'm leading.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see something written in there regarding the total lot acreage as, as Ms. Bubman-Pallett stated and you know, I, I understand the, the intent and I do appreciate the safety aspect of a proximity. I personally feel 2,500 yards is a little much because it, it, it would basically engulf the entire town, town limit.
It would rule out.
So, you know, a more, a more reasonable number. I know Ms. O'Connor stated 150 and 50, she used those numbers. I don't know if that's something we would consider or at least use that as a benchmark.
I think that, see, part of the dilemma that you find yourselves in is based on the nature of the application. I mean, it was a very broad application that didn't specify indoor, outdoor, didn't propose any restrictions with that application requested was a blanket approval for gun ranges, public or private, in the industrial district. And if you are acting on the application as written, then because it sounds like there's some concerns, what it, what you could say is that you recommend the denial as written. But you can also suggest to the applicant that maybe they want to go back and retool the application to make it more specific and address some of your concerns because it's the applicant's desire to seek this text amendment.
Yes.
And so it should be incumbent upon the applicant to provide data that, that you can use in evaluating the application. And, and frankly, we don't have that. And it also goes to, I mean, the range issue that you've raised goes to the type of weapons also that are used on the range. I mean, if you're talking about, you know, submachine guns, whatever, you know, you put it out there, there's no restriction in this application. What we heard from the applicant tonight who's seeking the amendment is it is largely for handguns. And the ranges for handgun is less than for a rifle, you know, so, so all these things are related, but we don't know. We don't, we don't have the data from the applicant who, who's making the, who's making the request. And so it may be that the applicant wants to take another crack at it, you know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, if they want to go with it the way it is, then they're going with it the way it is and you can, you know, vote on it or make recommendations as you see fit.
I'm, I'm gonna ask one of my famous questions. So let's say we go that route. And the applicant says, okay, you know, I'll, I'll tweak this. Does that cancel this request and then a new, or, or is it like?
It would just be an amendment.
It's an, it's an amendment to the amendment. What I'm getting at is that fee, is it gonna require another fee?
Zach's telling me how you do it. If he withdraws it, okay, yeah, then the board will not act on it on Monday. And he will not be charged another fee if he wants to resubmit. The initial fee will, will be sufficient.
Okay.
So, but that's, but it's the applicant's choice. I mean, if the, and the applicants talked about delays that he's experienced and I totally get it, you know, if you want to do something and but, you know, you're also operating in a little bit of a vacuum here.
Yeah, right. So let's hypothetically say that the applicant decides they want to tweak it and comes back to us with something. You know, it's hard for me to envision what that might be at this point, but would, would you think that they would write their own ordinance for their specific application?
That's what people do when they ask for text amendments.
Okay.
They're drafting an ordinance basically for you to consider that would have, but what's, you know, what's in and what's out.
Circumstances.
Yeah, you know, I mean, obviously it has general application as well, but that's, that's what the applicant is doing. He's saying, I want an ordinance that says X. And here the applicant said, I want an ordinance that says gun ranges, public or private, are allowed in the industrial zone.
Period.
Period.
Now, if the applicant just asks for an exception rather than a rule, how would that work? Or could he ask for an exception?
What do you mean?
So it's like, our rule is no gun ranges within, you know, the industrial zone currently. Could he say, I would like an exception to put a gun range on plot X?
You have to have the ability to, so, so you still have to, you still have to have an amendment because I think what you're talking about is saying, okay, well, gun ranges could be included with, if they apply for a special exception, right?
Correct.
So, so if that's what you're asking, you'd still have to amend the ordinance because in the town of Emmitsburg, gun ranges are prohibited within the city limits, period, full stop.
If we ask for a special exception, would that get us around people that are concerned stuff at Emmett Gardens or just gun ranges anywhere?
You still, you still need. You still, you still need standards.
Right, yeah.
That, and that's the kind of the piece we're missing.
Yeah, I think even if the applicant were to go back and rewrite their application and come back with an ordinance, I, I still think the town should have its own criteria and regulations.
Oh, sure.
Govern this.
Yeah, it doesn't restrict you, but once again, this goes back to, you know, what you were presented, which was a very general request. But so if the, if the applicant says, okay, I'm proposing that we allow gun ranges in industrial zone property with a minimum size of two and a half acres that aren't within you know, five hundred feet of residential district or whatever. I mean, you know, insert restrictions here and you as a commission say, well, okay, we're good with that, but we like some of the, some of the recommendations that are made by staff also. And we want to look at sound, for example, or sound remediation procedures that have to be followed. You can include those in your recommendation to the board. I mean, you can do that now. If you decide you want to make a recommendation to the board, but I don't know if you feel as though you have sufficient information with which to make a recommendation. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, and it sounds like one of the, it sounds like one of the recommendations from the, the board is to be for site specific, to be site specific. You have to have, well, you can do a special exception, which is reviewed by the Board of Appeals. So then they get into the actual specific site. So I think that's where you're heading, Kevin.
Right, so that would get us around us having to grant anything in totality.
It would be, yes, it would be evaluated in the context of the neighborhood.
Correct, right.
And there's a whole reema case law on special exceptions and how you analyze those.
Right, so, and then for example, you know, I may be fine with this range. But I may not want, want next to Emmett Gardens and I don't, I'm not comfortable giving a blanket statement. Whether we give distance or anything, and that's why I'm like, hey, I can be okay for this one. And if the next one comes up, they're gonna have to jump through all these hoops again and say, it's an exception.
Right.
I was gonna call the applicant back up. I'd like to ask the applicant a question. If that's okay?
Yeah, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Are you thinking what I'm thinking?
No, I, I should be asking that.
Well, go ahead. Go ahead. You can, you can ask him. So it sort of matter of record. I was just gonna ask if, if you would you be willing to withdraw your request this evening? Or are you determined to submit it as, as written?
I'll put, if, if I'm sitting where you are, I would want it to be broad. You can always bring in things. If, if you make it too restrictive from the start. And again, you're not really approved. It's like anything else in industrial zone. You have an industrial zone, but it doesn't mean that anybody can put anything, any kind of building in that industrial zone. You still have a process to go through to get to a site plan, to get to different things to, to bring that into a a buildable site, right? Me, I'd sooner have it more broad and you can tighten it up. As you, again, as you see fit, you gotta, you've had thirty days to look and see what might, and you did, and again, some of the stuff you guys have in there is, is good information. From Department of Energy or whatever, you mentioned Corps of Engineers or whatever. There's good information out there. You can, you can put you know, different things on here and say, look, in this specific site, it doesn't mean you have to approve another gun range in industrial zone. If it doesn't fit, then don't approve it. I'm bringing, this is a, this is a certain piece of property that I think really fits well there for what we want to do. And if, to me, you keep it broad and then you can all, you can bring it, you can hone it in as you see fit. But if you, if you get too restricted to begin with, then I don't know if you can go, go back, go the other way. You know what I mean? I, I would sooner kind of bring it in and then be, be stuck with something that you can't, you, you may want to see something later on that you can't fit in because you've been too restrictive to begin with. So, again, any, any zoning doesn't mean you can do whatever you want in that zoning. There's still restrictions on the zoning, there's still restrictions on the buildings, whatever, so. It's just, that's just my opinion of, of what how I would look at it, sitting there. I'd want the flexibility if it were me.
But if we were to make it a little less broad, just, just a, you know, a couple stipulations in there, does that sorry, do you have a certain schedule? Are, are you looking to move this process along and that's, that's one reason why you're suggesting that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we're, we've been, we've been looking at this for several months now. I mean, it's just yeah, we, we definitely want to move ahead with it, yeah.
I guess my, my thought, I understand that, you know, the, the start out broad, but if we, if we approve as written. I don't envision several shooting ranges to be, you know, applications for shooting ranges then to open up. I, I know you're interested in, in one, obviously. I don't, I don't foresee anybody else, but if there were anybody else, when we get those, this is directed to staff now. You know, the conditions, certain conditions are met. Those conditions aren't specific to they're not unique to each location. That's like a general overall list of conditions that need to be met for any property in that zone. Is that correct?
Yes, so the conditions. You know, you, you, for example, you can't make a condition that they need to collect any lead ammunition daily. The conditions can only be what's written in code existing.
So it would be, so for example, it would be the, the basic site plan restrictions, setback restrictions.
Lighting.
Yeah, lighting. It's the stuff that applies to everything.
Okay.
So it doesn't allow you to make gun range if it's specific restrictions. You don't, because that's not appropriate. I mean, you need to have the, the guidelines, so. While I appreciate Mr. Delauter's, you know, view that it should be broad and then you can narrow it. The problem is you can't, you can't narrow it. Unless you put it in this ordinance. Unless you're willing to live with the site plan and other restrictions that apply to all properties within the industrial zone.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So. I know you have plenty of work to do, Zach, on a regular daily basis. How would you feel, and of course, the, the town commission have to authorize this, I suppose, but how would you feel writing up formal criteria for a shooting range?
I agree with Leslie that it should be done by the applicant.
By the applicant.
I'm not an expert in gun ranges. I'm not gonna pretend to be, so what we have in our staff comments is what we, we did our research on.
Yeah.
Now, we're not saying twenty-five hundred, for example, twenty-five hundred yards. We were, I was talking to Leslie and that's more likely rifles. So there are more specifics, so I would feel more comfortable an expert writing it. The applicant, that is.
Well, the, the other issue, I mean, it, it also goes to cost. I mean, the applicant's the one who's seeking the amendment. And there are sound experts. I've actually worked with several sound experts that are out there that design things to be less impactful, if you will, but that's something that you know, that the applicant could provide you information on more readily because I can tell you that the minute I call up a sound expert, the clock starts ticking. So, I mean, we're looking at a fair, it, it could be a fair amount of money depending upon the design criteria. And then there's gonna be a million questions that I don't know the answer to because I'm not the one who's seeking the amendment.
So, so I, I would not want to pass this amendment without criteria. And, you know, I think it opens up too many issues. So, so I guess. You know, if we rely on Mr. Delauter and Kathleen to come back with a more specific request and with criteria for how shooting ranges are designed. You know, I guess we would have to have some trust in their expertise and, and trust that you went to experts to get this information and trust that you're doing this for the welfare of the town. So I guess it would hinge on whether or not you're willing to do that or not.
Mr. Chairman, and then staff would be able to evaluate those specific criterias that they mentioned in the application, so then we can provide additional input. Based on what the experts say.
So if I understand what you're saying, are you going to provide a recommendation with that criteria or or not? Or with, with a recommendation stating to the board that I don't know, either, I would say approval or denial, I guess, if you're gonna recommend approval with certain criteria, with criteria from the applicant that states the outline of, of the information you're looking for, for the range.
I, I guess it would be asking for a tabling of it, I, I suppose. Or you withdraw this application and come back with more, a, a different application that has criteria written into it for firing ranges somewhat along the lines of the, the the requirements or the recommendations that the staff has already proposed or, or something along those lines that has the amount of acreage, how sound will be mitigated, how lead is going to be handled. Safety, public safety, all this stuff.
We'll withdraw and do that. Okay, we'll just do, we'll withdraw and we'll come back and there's no fee for that, correct? Okay.
That, that there would be no correct, no fee for the resubmission. If you withdraw the application. There would be no fee for a new submission. That is correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Delauter, you're withdrawing on behalf of PB three LLC, is that correct? You're withdrawing on behalf of PB three LLC?
That's yes.
Because that's the official applicant.
Yeah, that's my LLC.
Understood. So you'll withdraw, submit something to me and then we can reschedule the public hearing for the planning commission.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I can't answer for the Board of Commissioners, but I, I had a feeling that if we were to proceed with even saying we denied it because we were going to require certain conditions. The board might have came back and voted no. I like, I'd still like to see a final product. I'd like to see, you know, what would become of it. I just don't wanna write it off. And if the board would deny it at that point, then I think, am I right? It would be done. It, it's, it's a done.
Then it's done.
Yeah.
Um, so just clarify, clarify, the board, this will be canceled at the Board of Commissioners meeting next week.
Okay.
It's withdrawn from the agenda, correct?
Thank you.
So everybody good? Okay. Next item for this evening is Emmitsburg East Industrial Park Two, the final forest conservation plan for lots five, six and remainder. File number two thousand twenty-two dash eighteen.
Okay, staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is the final forest conservation plan for lots five, six and remainder, as the chairman stated. The owner is Federal Stone with David Rethmeyer, applicant Bob Barrick. File number twenty-two dash eighteen. The proposed project consists of creating three new lots, lot one, which will be, or excuse me, the first is lot five, which would be thirteen point eight acres. The second is lot six, which is seven point two acres, and the third is remainder, five point eight acres. Two point one acres, one one acres of the forest has been placed into a forest conservation easement per approval of the final forest conservation plan for compliant, combined lots seven and eight. The owner is proposing to pay the town's fee in lieu of for the remaining two point nine seven acres of a forestation, reforestation mitigation requirements. As always, there is the timeline. If you, excuse me, one second here. And the agency reviews, as always, suggested motion from staff is to move to approve the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park Two's final forest conservation plan with the following conditions as outlined in the staff memo. And there are seventeen. And that's my presentation and the applicant is here with their engineer.
Okay, thank you, Zach. Any questions for Zach?
I just have a technical question. I know we regularly say it's put into the, you know, the fees of trees or plant anyways. Do we ever have the ability to say, no, you have to do it on that site?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Yes. Um, this is a question for staff. If it does go into a fee in lieu of, do we have places left to put?
Yes, so we cannot use it for MS four credit, our stormwater program. It's, it's prohibited against federal, states, excuse me, state code. However, the town did do a street tree plan. So our goal is to do street trees throughout our parks. So that's what it's being proposed as. However, you know, we'll take that to the commissioners. Once we have enough money. We don't have enough money currently. It's only about nine thousand dollars and the street tree plans estimate about sixty to seventy-five thousand. We haven't bid it officially bid it yet. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was a place to put them.
Yes.
Uh, would the applicant like to make any statement?
Hey, good evening. I'm Bob Barrick with Piedmont Design Group in Frederick, Maryland. A civil engineer. Uh, with me also is Mike Wiley, also Piedmont Design Group and Brandon Rethmeyer with Federal Stone, the owner. Um, I just wanted to say that we've reviewed staff comments and we don't see any issue in complying with them. We're, you know, happy, we're just here and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you. Any discussion from commissioners? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park Two's final conservation, forest conservation plan with the conditions that were listed in the memo we received this evening.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park Two's final forest conservation plan with the conditions outlined in the staff memo. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It carries unanimously. Move on to the next item. It's Emmitsburg East Industrial Park Two's final subdivision plat for lots five, six and remainder, file number two thousand twenty-two dash nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the same owners, same engineers are here for the project. The proposed project consists of creating three new lots, lot five, which is thirteen point eight acres, lot six, seven point two acres and the remainder lot, which is five point eight acres. As always, our timeline, our agency reviews, and then our suggested motion is to move to approve the final subdivision plat for lots five, six and remainder for the FS Creamery LLC with the following nine conditions as outlined in the staff memo.
Okay, any questions for Zach?
Yes. It's one basic question. It jumped out at me. It's all the way on page one, under the timeline, plan review period. The application date is January thirty-first of this year and here we are eight months later. Just, it jumps out at me as to be a
typo.
Is it, is it a typo? Because it was an awful large gap there. Is that, is that a typo?
That's definitely a typo.
Oh, good.
And I'm glad you caught that because we only have thirty days to review a final subdivision plan. Just good for the FYI.
So what should that be?
No, it's, let's see.
It does come before that February date.
It was August. It was August thirty-first. They hand delivered.
And then the app, no, the application date on the plan review period.
You're right.
So that's
One thirty-one should be eight thirty-one.
And then the, the next line is that February twenty-eighth of twenty-two?
No, that's tonight.
So that one's nine So that one's nine twenty-six.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're talking about the combined lots seven and eight. That is correct.
Yeah, that's.
That is correct.
Now I was a little confused. We we've dealt with some of this before, but.
Yeah, lots. I'll I'll explain, sorry. So they submitted lots seven, eight and remainder back in January.
Okay.
They did submit this application August thirty-first. Am I correct, Mike? Yes.
Okay, so so then the following line for seven, eight and and the remainder is indeed February twenty.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, too many plans.
Yeah.
No, I got it. This this makes sense.
Any other questions for staff? Any other comments from commissioners about this application?
Nope.
If not, do I hear a motion?
I'll do it. I I'll make a motion to approve the final subdivision plat for lots five, six and remainder. For FS Creamery LLC with the following, with the conditions that were listed in our memo we received this evening.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the final subdivision plat for lots five, six and remainder. For FS Creamery LLC with the conditions outlined in the staff memo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And then. Under other business. A Board of Appeals Review Request Regarding Corner Lot Fences.
Okay, so I'm gonna take a run at this.
Okay.
So um, we had, and they're here in the audience tonight, but we have some property owners who appear before. The Board of Appeals um, seeking a variance to allow the installation of a fence. On a corner lot and one of the vagaries of corner lots is that you can have.
Whoops, sorry, that was me.
You can have more than one front yard. And when the the Board of Appeals was looking at this application and if you take public comment, I'm sure that. Our Board of Appeals representative as well as the applicants could shed a little bit more light on this dilemma, but um. It appeared to the Board of Appeals that this was a problem that was capable of repetition and would be more appropriately addressed. In the form of a text amendment. And so the question before this board is whether to make a recommendation. To the Board of Commissioners that it consider instituting a text amendment to allow fences. On um, quote unquote, front yards on corner lots. With certain restrictions as may or may not be applicable. And uh, because it's, it's something that kind of screams for a, a solution. Or at least that's the way it seemed when we were at the Board of Appeals hearing.
But we we don't have an example of the text amendment here before.
No, this would be making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to say, yes, you should go and make a text amendment staff. And make a proposal and then it would come back to you. You'd make the recommendation and the Board of Commissioners would then vote on it.
Or no, we don't make a recommendation that it should change or the. Or the applicants or or they should have an applicant apply for a zoning text amendment. So there's a lot of different solutions here.
Yeah, I guess personally, I'm in a little bit of a quandary since I didn't have any background on this prior to the meeting, other than that. YouTube video that was an hour and some, and I never watched that.
Twenty-six minutes.
Sorry, I didn't have time.
Well.
So I I'm not sure I'm comfortable making any kind of recommendation for something I don't.
Well, and and this is, if you'd pass on making a recommendation, the Board of Commissioners can still take it up.
Yeah.
But you may want to take comment, you may want to take comment from people.
I mean, I kind of get what the issue is. I I think I understand, but I haven't really thought this through in a broad sense.
Correct, but it's just, it would be to make a recommendation that the board consider a text amendment, but if you take. Testimony from Ms. Walbrecker or and the individual applicants who are before the board, I think it might shed a little bit of light on. What the issues are.
Want to hear them speak.
Sure.
Come on up. Do I have to swear them in?
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
We already did. Oh, you were sworn, yeah.
They've been waiting.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's gonna work, but.
Have a question, sir.
Yeah.
Good evening, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get your name?
Robert Turnquist, I live in four thousand Carrot Court, Emmitsburg, Maryland.
Okay.
We have a presentation because we weren't sure, you know, the 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 request for. For the uh, by the Board of Appeals, excuse me, yeah, the Appeals Board. Was made by, I don't know her last name, I know her first name is Diane.
She's here.
I'm sorry, she, you are here. Better go, and 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 Mr. Guden just said something that made me very nervous. If the Board of Appeals. Request uh, uh, this rewriting of of the code text. Is one thing. If we requested, he's, I think he just said, it costs us a thousand dollars. Is that correct, sir?
That's the current fee schedule set by the Board of Commissioners, yes, for a zoning text amendment.
But did not the Board of Appeals suggest? That that occur?
The Board of Appeals, what the Board of Appeals did was table the issue for six months.
Yes.
To make inquiry and request the planning commission to suggest that the Board of Commissioners consider. Whether it would be interested in adopting a text amendment, which would then not result in the thousand dollar charge to you. So that's the way that rolled.
Okay, so I mean, we have a an obvious presentation, uh, recommendations as to what? That uh. Creation of 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 a text amendment would be. Just wanna make sure we're not getting over our heads with this, with this money issue. We, we spent a lot of money already. So do you want our full presentation? Are we gonna answer questions?
When you say you have a presentation, I mean, you have handouts or you just want to.
Yes, yes, we do. We have handouts.
Uh, how long are they?
Can I ask a question?
We have a pretty lengthy presentation.
Thank you.
If we hear from this wallbreaker first, it may solve a lot of the questions people have here. Or she'll explain why the board did what they did.
So I think we were under, under the 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 understanding that. That was gonna be presented either by staff or whatever tonight, but we came prepared just in case it wasn't. Uh, as far as. Okay, rewriting the ZV or suggestions on rewriting the text of the code.
So. If if you want to step back for a minute, maybe we can hear from Diane and maybe she can give a brief overview of things and then uh, we'll come back to you.
Sorry, didn't remember.
Hi, Diane Walbrecker again, five thirty-five West Main. I'm also the Chair of the Board of Appeals. We really were struggling with trying to come up with some way. That the restrictions on corner lots that are now. There are roads that are going through developments. I forget the name of that one. Timber Mill and what's the other one?
Brookfield.
Brookfield. Timber Mill and Brookfield are now becoming thoroughfares. And when you have corner lots where there are restrictions on the size. I understand why you don't want a huge fence in somebody's front yard. But on a corner lot, they're both considered front lawns. So I think it places perhaps um. A requirement on the Board of Commissioners to consider asking staff. To suggest a text amendment that would solve that problem for other people in other parts of town because. There are going to be more developments built and there will be more uh, roads going through on which traffic is faster. Than on the subdivision roads. And I think we just need to look at this overall for the good of the town for the future. So that was our suggestion. I didn't realize that the turn was had prepared something. But I don't want to get them in trouble by having them have to pay for it. That didn't seem fair. But I didn't think I was allowed to make the request either. Um.
We're breaking new.
Officially, so. We, we're just trying to find a solution that will work for everybody in the town in the future.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So let me make sure I understand. You wanted to put a fence on both sides of your property on the corner. Is that correct?
No, we wanted to put a fence in what is considered our technical rear yard.
In the rear yard?
In the rear yard, but because we're on a corner lot. The entire side facing either any public roadway is considered a front yard. So we have two front yards. Technically, we don't have a rear yard.
Oh, okay. So is is this a town ordinance that prevents this or is it an HOA or?
Town.
It's a town.
I have a fence all the way around my property.
You're not a corner lot.
Corner lot. I'm on the corner of Stoner Lane.
Maybe it was before the ordinance was written. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Lots of variables.
You have two public roadways on each side of your your lot.
It it was an HOA one as we removed it two years ago.
She's in Pembroke, though.
It was removed two years ago.
In Pembroke.
Over, yeah.
So. Okay.
So when we um, at the Board of Appeals meeting. Um, Diane had suggested that they work with Zach. To come up with a text amendment code change. When I asked Zach prior to this meeting, will the Board of Appeals present a text code change? And he said, no, that whatever we wanted the planning commission to know, we needed to provide. We needed to come prepared.
Okay.
Um. To talk about, you know, the corner lot issue. So we did prepare a text amendment. Based on that conversation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If the turnquests are okay with this and the board is okay with this, it is possible to table this. They're not in any. Direct uh, chance, they're not gonna get fined. The Board of Appeals basically issued a stay. Or how long was it, a year? For six months. Yeah, so we have six months to figure this out. So if the board was more comfortable waiting for a presentation that next month, you know, when it's not nine o'clock. What if you want to do it tonight? That's great, too.
I'm definitely comfortable waiting because I want to, you know, I'm not going to absorb this this evening. I didn't have this in advance.
Well, you know, like Mr. Delauter had mentioned, the boards had thirty days to review any background information. The town should have submitted a package to the planning commission. In order to become up to date on what this is all about.
I can provide an update on that, Mr. Chairman. A formal zoning text amendment application wasn't submitted, so it doesn't go by those rules.
Yeah.
This is just a recommendation from the Board of Appeals. Yes, if it was a formal submittal, absolutely, thirty days.
Okay.
But yeah, the submittal is not coming from them. The Board of Appeals made a recommendation that this be raised to the planning commission. And if the planning commission believes that this is something that's appropriate to consider, the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Is that the Board of Commissioners direct staff to prepare a draft text amendment. For the review by the planning commission on the dilemma of. Corner lots.
Yeah, Ms. Powell, so if we just believe this is a repeatable thing.
Mm-hmm.
We can tell we want to kick it to the Board of Commissioners.
Right, and you you would then make the request that the Board of Commissioners, as I said, direct staff. To prepare a text amendment for your consideration, and that's all we're asking.
Right, it goes up and down.
Exactly.
Correct, that's all we're asking you to do here tonight. Nobody's broken any rules.
Right, no, I'm just, I wanted to make sure that it's, we just have to think it's repeatable to say.
Right.
Does it go up? We don't have to worry about this individual case.
Right, and based on the evidence that was presented to the Board of Appeals, one could fairly believe that it is.
So you don't need from us a specific recommendation for what the text amendment would be? If we just say we recommend that you.
The town explore a text amendment to address.
The onus will be on staff, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, staff would write the text amendment.
Or or does the town commissioners first have to recommend that? Are we recommending to the town commissioners or are we recommending to you to do something?
Do you would recommend it to the town commissioners and then the town commissioners would say, yes, let's look into that. Or no, we're not interested in that.
Yeah, basically, it's a town instituted text amendment.
Okay.
That's what you're recommending, that this be a town instituted text amendment as opposed to, for example, Mr. Delauter's text amendment, which is an applicant.
Exactly. I was thinking, I was looking at that as an apples and oranges thing.
It's totally apples and orange.
So with that said, I'll abstain from anything we do tonight because this is gonna be going back to the board. Um, I guess I just, I don't want to drag this out. I do have one question, though. Um. I went, I drove up through Pembroke and I did not bring my measuring tape with me. But I I noticed, um, sorry, yeah, you might, um, there was about five lots, corner lots that I noticed in in Pembroke. That had fence, that oriented. The same direction as four thousand Carrot Court that had similar fence configuration coming from the. What I would call the rear side, but we're gonna call it a front. Basically the same format. Uh, I did not measure those fences. I don't know if they're four feet. I don't know if they're five. I don't know if they're six. Some of them appeared to be about six because they had that um, with the post and the. Then the, what's that called, a finial?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. I guess I could have stood next to it. I know how tall I am. I couldn't with that. So that said, um, because I've noticed this. Maybe they're under. Under the height, they're under the height um, restrictions. How did all this, was there a complaint that was received that, you know, were you tipped off? Did you receive a complaint that, hey, this this house has a fence? Cause I know they had a fence at one time, maybe. I don't know if it was you or a prior owner, might have been a different size and now it's a different.
It was a permit violation is what happened.
Okay.
That's how, that's how this came up because their contractor didn't know enough to come to the town. And say, do I need a permit for the fence? That's what happened.
And that triggered it.
That triggered it, yeah, because if the contractor had done what he should have done, then everybody would know. But instead, here we are.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Um. Like you said, it's, it sounds like this is bringing to light an issue that was probably already always there. But this just happened to bring it to light. I also went and walked the fence line at the property. And took a look at everything and I did use, I stood by the fences though, I used my height as an, as measuring. And there are. Other areas that that seem to have fences on a corner lot that are bigger than four feet. Having said that, I don't want this to turn into a witch hunt, but at the same time, I think there can be something. Modified if we recommend it up. So that we don't continue to have this issue and and putting the residents in this precarious position, especially if they're on a corner lot. Because they're in a very unique situation compared to people who aren't on a corner lot.
Right, but all the corner lots are in the same boat. And if you have a a busy throughway. You, you know, you could see why people would want privacy and what they technically use as their backyard or.
Yes, yeah. Four, just for example, four new corner lots were created with the completion of Irrestown Road. So there's four more, you know, issues, if you want to call it issues, um, or maybe it's not an issue, but.
So if if we don't have to come up with a specific recommendation. So if, if we don't have to come up with a specific recommendation and we just need to make a recommendation to the town commissioners to explore this, I'd be comfortable doing that tonight.
Yeah, that's repeatable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would someone like to craft a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Oh, yes.
Will we at some point be able to address the full Board of Commissioners or is this completely taken out of our hands? Because we have some very specific issues to bring up.
Yeah, we would like to be a part of the code amendment change, the change in text. We would like to review the code change.
You can.
Crafted.
You, you would have, okay, so this is, this is where the difference between drafting your own text amendment versus the town undertaking a text amendment. Okay? And so you would certainly have the ability to make public comment and be heard at any hearing before the planning commission on the recommendation to the Board after the text amendment is drafted, as well as at the Board of Commissioners meeting, you would, you have the right to, to be heard. But in terms of crafting the amendment itself, that would be within the town's rubric, but I can tell you that the town heard you loud and clear and you would have access to review it before it's.
As long as we will have, at some point, we press in this, this commission or, or the Board of Commissioners.
It has to come back before the planning commission, if the Board so chooses.
It does.
It has to come back to the planning commission, just like Mr. Delauter's text amendment tonight, same exact thing.
Yeah, anything to do with zoning.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I know where you live. We're good. We're good.
Yes, since we aren't making, since we aren't making a specific recommendation as to what the text amendment would said, I, I don't know that we need for you to take time tonight to explain.
My question is at some point in the future.
Since it will be coming back to us, plus to the town.
For the Board of Commissioners that we would have a chance to present our.
Well, hopefully it'll answer your concerns.
Exactly.
If we aren't going to pretend, um, if we're not going to present the text amendment, can I collect that my handouts?
I, well, because it's helpful.
It is helpful.
I think it's helpful for us to have.
I didn't draw, I promise.
I, I would like to keep this.
It's very helpful for staff to see what you're thinking.
Yeah.
If we're trying to craft it, but, because we're just going to be shooting, you know, in the dark for what you're trying to.
I just feel like I've put everything on the table and I have nothing in return. I have it electronically, so I'll let you give that to.
I do.
How did you get electronically?
I asked.
No.
No, not this.
Not that one? This is different?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
I forwarded the original application.
Right.
Okay, it looks pretty similar.
Well, there's a lot of, there's the similar things, but what they've done here is make proposals, gotcha, suggestions.
I mean, if the, if you'd like to speak.
But this wouldn't be construed as us.
No.
It's not, no. No, this, this is just background for us.
Okay.
As far as I can.
The, if you're going to rewrite the code, you know, I think when we were here last, you said that the code for projections into front yards did not apply to through lots. I don't think that's accurate. And if you look at the highlighted sections, I think it's page two or three, it specifically says through lots have two frontages. So the text amendment should definitely cover both corner lots and through lots.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I believe the end, the end person that you said, that was on the, the Board of Appeals.
Mr. Frager.
It was my understanding as zoning administrator that it wasn't included, but since this was brought to my attention, I'll review it again.
Yeah, if you review the, yeah, the definitions, it tells you a through lot has two front yards. So it would be the same situation as a corner lot.
We'd have to review with our turn.
Right, exactly, exactly. But that was part of our presentation, presentation. So I just wanted to point that out that we were going to bring that up.
It's a good point. Thank you. Their actual corner lot, what they're saying is the through lots, which it.
Yeah, I know. It's in the middle.
It's in the middle. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'd have to look at that. Understood.
Mr. Chairman, just throwing something real quick. I, I, I got it. I did allude to it earlier, but I would like to thank the Board of Appeals and anyone else that was involved for bringing this to us, thinking outside of the box. I like this. It was, it was thinking ahead. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we need a, a motion, please.
Yes. One more question from Amy.
Yes, I'm sorry. I just have one more question. When the recommendation is made to, to look at the code again, will this be something that is available as a resource?
I would recommend that the Turnquists come to that meeting and, yeah, speak during public comment. Speak during public comment of, you know, why we're doing this and what your thoughts are. And then we move forward with that. Then they can present this, they can present this to the Board of Commissioners then at that meeting.
So that's while it's being written, just to clarify, or after it's written?
Before.
Before, okay.
Yeah.
Basically, this, this highlights their concerns and then we'll look at that in the context of the entire town to address all similarly situated lots. So that's, it's, we're looking for a global resolution.
Our proposal wasn't specifically geared to 4,000.
For residents, right?
Right.
And that's the right way to do it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we appreciate it. This is very helpful.
So just to clarify, if I understand correctly, this will now go to the Board of Commissioners and they will say, yes, we'll, we'll take that into consideration. And then it will come back to the planning commission to review the actual proposal that's then going to go back to the Board of Commissioners.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a journey. Sorry.
Yeah.
But I, I can guarantee you, as we work through this, you're doing the right steps. We don't find people that do the right steps. So we're not going to find you. If it goes past six months, if it goes past six months, you know, because the process is long, you're doing the right thing. So we don't, we don't operate like that.
I prefer that it not be dragged out six months because we do have a life that we want to continue to live without these interruptions.
State mandates are, you know, makes us do the process, so.
Okay.
In their court, yes. It's flexible.
We have a stay.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. So we can just ask for an extension to the Board of Appeals. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
We need a motion from somebody.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners to review the zoning code seventeen dot oh four dot zero one zero and seventeen dot oh four dot zero two zero.
Second. I'm sorry. Zach.
So we have a.
Wasn't there additional codes? Wasn't there sixty, oh sixty?
I would just say corner lots and fences.
So I recommend that the Order Commissioners review the zoning codes for corner lots.
With four foot and high fences.
With four foot and higher fences.
Okay.
That's good.
That's the right.
Yeah.
Now, you want a second?
Yes, please. I'll second that.
Can we have a motion and a second? And I'm not going to trust my mind to repeat what you just said. Hopefully it's being recorded.
On YouTube. I think everybody knows.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I abstain for the record. Was there an abstention?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I did abstain for the record. I, I wasn't very, I was away from.
No.
Thank you for pointing that out as the secretary.
Yeah, I thought I heard somebody.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
So I think that takes care of all the business. Just on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, FYI, we cannot get it on next week's Board of Commissioners' agenda. So we're going to try to get it on November. We'll do our best. I have to get approval from the manager and the mayor, so. No, there's not. Yeah. Okay.
No, it would be in the November meeting.
At the earliest.
Thank you. So I heard a rumor that there's an election tomorrow.
I wish you all well.
A rumor, just a rumor.
A rumor. Wish you well.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say something to that. Mr. Chair, Amy and Kevin, thank you for stepping up, running for Commissioner. There's a possibility that might be serving with two of you. I'm serving with at least one after the, the results tomorrow. And then, as you know, the Board reorganizes. So Glenn and everyone else that, that may not win tomorrow. I enjoy my time on the Planning Commission. I hope to remain on the Planning Commission, but that's not a guarantee. So this might be my last meeting for a while. It's been fun. I hope the ride can continue, though. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Did you have anything else, Zach?
Good luck, everybody. Battle of the Planning Commission.
So are we meeting next month?
Supposedly, we're getting some plans in by Friday that we will review next month. I don't know the date yet. I'll send you an email on Friday or Monday. As you know, the thirty-first is Halloween and I'd like to take my son trick or treating, so.
Oh.
And the twenty-fourth is a public.
Is a public workshop, so it's going to probably be another Tuesday if okay, but we'll talk.
Yeah.
But yes, we're going to have a meeting.
Here, I'm shaking my head and it might not even relate to me. Sure. Just being positive. Not on Halloween, no.
Anything else for the good of the calls, folks? If not, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.